Good afternoon. It's July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'd like to welcome all those who are online and also in present to this emergency meeting that we are to discuss the inflation that has currently been announced over nine percent and interest rates that are due to go up in the next week. And to talk about the importance of securing funds based off our recommendations and summary from our Future Schools project. And along with other items of creating a local building authority. And moving forward on consent items and other action items as a school board. So we'll begin by the pledge of allegiance and we'll ask Superintendent Sweat to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we typically do, we'll open up for public comment and then we'll move on to our agenda items.
Hi, Tracy Taylor, Heber City. I was listening to your work meeting before this meeting and I have just a couple of comments to make because I'm assuming you're not going to allow us to speak during the agenda item. So first of all, there were a bunch of phone calls that I received concerned about the fact that this lease revenue decision was not really noticed more than when the agenda was posted yesterday. Some people said to me that the agenda yesterday did not have some of the things that were on today's agenda. I'm just telling you this, I'm just relaying the information. One person said, "There's nothing worse than to feel like the public has no say." I personally was on the Future Schools Advisory Council for six months. We never talked about lease revenue bonds. I don't recall ever having that discussion. We sat there for six months, donated, volunteered a bunch of our time. We never had these discussions. Today, there was a lot of financial information that was given during the study session. It's not up on your website, on Board Docs. So it would be nice if you guys could post everything that the bond guys showed you papers and such. The, also, the Y2 analytics survey isn't up there either on your Board Docs. Just want to say that, you know, people feel like, is it fiscally responsible to buy fifty dresses for half off on your credit card when you don't wear dresses or you don't need fifty dresses? Somebody mentioned that to me as well. People have said to you, they want you to add on to the current high school first.
Thank you, Tracy, your time's up.
The current high school first before you spend more money. We don't get to vote on this lease revenue bond that is circumventing the public good. Thank you.
Appreciate your feedback. All right, we will now...
Wait, anybody else?
You want to talk through it?
Oh.
Oh, is there anybody else? Oh, yeah, come on in. No, I just said we are now going to move to the next public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Sarah Fowler, I'm a mother of two, go to Heber Valley Elementary School. I've never been to one of your board meetings before, it's kind of new. I have a couple of concerns, just wanted to bring to your attention about the lack of some cameras that are not at the school and kind of my concerns on that point from inside and outside the school. I do take my children over there to eat lunch and I did notice that the lack of cameras on the back of the school are not there. I do believe it is a concern and I just wanted to make you aware. I have been informed that there's supposed to be cameras put inside, but that has not taken place. I know, I have been told numerous times even by Mr. Campbell that that was supposed to have been done, has not been done. So I feel that there is adequate concern so that when my children go back in August, that there needs to be some security measures taken in place. I mean, we just have, all over the United States, we're having shootings everywhere. And I think as a parent and a child that's going into the fourth grade, it is scary to know that some of the schools here may not have those security things in place. And I would appreciate if maybe, you know, Heber Valley Elementary maybe can be seen and looked at for those concerns.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you coming. Zach, can you give us an update on the cameras?
Sorry, I just meant to give this to you guys to submit in the public record. I think most of you have received this. This is some tax information comparing Wasatch County to the rest of the counties in the state and how high we are being taxed compared to Summit County. If we pass this hundred and fifty million lease option bond, we will be above Summit County. Thank you.
Thanks for your time, Tracy. Yeah, Zach, you want to comment on the cameras?
So, Heber Valley, we have probably twelve or thirteen security cameras installed at that building. Everyone that's been requested has been put in. Classroom cameras are being installed, but those are not security cameras. As the board, as you've decided, we do not surveil classrooms, so we don't put security cameras in the classrooms, so... But there is a, the teaching cam are going in there and they're, most of them are installed, they're working on the software sort of stuff, so that should be in place for school. Like I say, every request I've got for cameras at that building, we've put them in, so if, you know, if we have requests, maybe talk to the principal and we can get them done.
If I can clarify, the cameras in the classroom are primarily for instruction. They're for lesson planning amongst teachers, they work well with our PLCs. They do, they do act as a security measure in some ways. And I'm not sure, Mr. Campbell, you might have to clarify, but I believe that they do have a mechanism where a teacher can hit an emergency button through their classroom camera.
Absolutely, yes.
So, so they do have that ability and they, they are the cameras at Heber Valley that are just being installed. We don't have those in every school in the district, but we, we've worked our way through maybe about half of the schools. That's, so that will be there. Now, ma'am, you mentioned somewhere behind the school or the back of the school.
You know where they're, having the kids come in for their lunch program, I've seen no cameras on that back side and they are doors. And so it kind of concerned me that those are door accesses and I do believe that there should be cameras there because that is door access.
Do you know where she's talking about, Zach?
The lunch, the north entrance by the lunchroom by the, right there where the dumpster is, I believe that's where they...
Yeah, yeah, but there's...
Do you know if there's a camera there or not?
There's not, no. We only have them at the playgrounds and the front door, I believe, at that school.
So we'll take a look at that, we'll review that. We appreciate your concern. The board might have more to say about that. I would just mention that Wasatch County School District's been very proactive on student safety. We were one of the, one of the first districts to go work with our county and city to have a resource officer at every building. Their primary, their primary function being there is to, is to be on the watch and on the lookout and to protect our kids at all costs. We have a buzz-in feature at every school now. This board above, I would say, any other in the state has made a huge commitment to school safety. And that will continue. And we appreciate you coming tonight and bringing this to our attention and sharing your concern and we'll follow up with Zach and our, and our other guys and if there's a hole over there, we need to throw another camera up, we will.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can I make a...
Since I'm already standing, I'll just address you as a parent and thank you all for what you do. I know you get a lot of opposition, but you guys are awesome.
Thanks, Zach.
We need a school, you guys are taking the right steps for us, so thank you. And I'm in Corey's district, so that's the first thing I'm supposed to say, right? So, thanks.
Thanks.
Back to the security, I think in light of things that have happened recently, it wouldn't hurt as a district and as a board to just reassess and constantly reassess, reassess, you know, what is going on with security measures. And I think we talked a little bit about it last month, too. I remember we, we touched on it. So it definitely is something that I feel that should be a constant conversation and just always reassessing how, how secure our buildings are.
Can I ask one more question? You say that the resource officers are, you know, at every school and they are, is this something that is federally required or is this just state required? So it's not required or is it just...
It's a district decision.
It's a district decision.
It's not required at all. And it is...
It is in conjunction with the Wasatch County Sheriff's Department and the Heber City Police Department. They, they both contribute officers around the, around the district. And they, in fact, at Wasatch High School, they each provide one officer. So we have two at the high school, such a large campus and multi-b buildings and...
So when one of them is sick, is there somebody that comes in for their place or if they get pulled off to say patrol or need to patrol, is there somebody that can come and fill in for them or are they just pulled for that day?
No, I, I believe that if they're, if they have a sick day or they're going to be out for a couple of days, that someone else comes and fills their, their place. Sean, you want to talk a little bit?
That's exactly right. If they're sick, somebody takes their place, they are not pulled off for patrol unless it's like a national, like huge thing, they've never pulled somebody out of the school and said, "We need you more important there." Their primary role is there. They're there unless, we've never pulled them out. And I, I appreciate every time I drive around the district in the given morning and see that police car or that sheriff's truck parked in the center in front of our building.
I think it sends a strong message that our kids are being protected and they're under the watchful eye and we reiterate, and some of the guys that we have are the best in the business. We have some fantastic officers in our building, so we, we feel like we're doing, we're doing everything we can and if there's more we can do, we want to do it.
Yeah, please reach out to anyone on the board and we can continue to help you with your, your questions. But I will say, you know, one thing that is unique to Wasatch County School District are full-time armed resource officers in every elementary school, along with full-time certified guidance counselors or school counselors in the elementary school. That's not, that's unheard of across the country. To be able to provide those resources in elementary schools is above and beyond. And so we've made that a priority and we're sticking to those decisions that we made.
We're all parents, too, and we watch the news as well and it really concerns us of what's going on out there. So it was a big leap of us to get an officer at every, every campus and we'll continue to do that because we feel very strongly about it.
Is that going to be a future commitment for...
Yes.
Well, it's been going on for years.
It has been since two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, we've, we've had them in place for years.
Yeah. Yeah, the board made that decision in perpetuity.
Yeah.
It would have to take a board decision to pull those, to pull officers out. Okay, any additional comments? Perfect, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the first part of this school board meeting. And then enter into the local building authority meeting.
Make a motion when you adjourn and move into the local building authority meeting.
Yep, sir, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, welcome to the local building authority meeting. We're, we're going to ask Brad Patterson to come up, who is our bond counsel, to walk us through action items two and three. Welcome, Brad.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Brad Patterson, I'm with the law firm of Gilmore Bell. A lot of you know my partner, Randy Larson, he couldn't be here this evening, but I'm happy to fill in for him and Randy will be back at the next meeting, so it's great to be here with you. One of the things that we're going to be doing this evening is that we will be adopting bylaws. As you know, during the past month, the local building authority was formed, the resolution was adopted that created the building authority, articles of incorporation were adopted and those articles of incorporation were filed with the state. And so now the local building authority is a valid corporation, a valid nonprofit corporation. And so you are free to go ahead and take the next step in the whole process and that is the adoption of bylaws, the election of officers, and then take a few other steps as well that we'll talk about. But probably the first thing we should address is just who you would like to have as your officers. There's president, vice president, much the same like the board. And so that's probably the first thing that you should entertain.
I entertain the motion that we keep the officers the same as we have with our current district.
I can't make that, that's a suggestion.
I will, I will make the motion that we adopt the current structure of this board as the officers of the local building authority, Wasatch County School District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Very good. The next thing on the item is to adopt bylaws. Let me just go ahead and read to you the resolution that's been proposed and then you can consider it and debate it if you'd like to and then go on to subsequent to that. But the resolution that is going to be before you is a resolution adopting bylaws and a tax, a tax and disclosure compliance procedures for the local building authority of Wasatch County School District, confirming the election of the officers for such authority, declaring the official intent of the authority to reimburse itself from the proceeds of bonds for certain capital expenditures advanced by the authority, establishing the maximum principal amount of such expenditures and related matters.
So can we just get a so moved on that?
Yes, you can. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have number two passes. Or is there another component of item number two?
There is not, that was item number two.
Okay, perfect.
The next resolution for consideration is the consideration for adoption of a resolution which authorizes the series of some lease revenue bonds that will be issued by the building authority. It authorizes the issuance of those bonds and it authorizes also such other actions, such as the execution of an indenture, the execution of a master lease agreement with the school board, and then a few other matters. And if you can bear with me for just a second, I will go ahead and read that resolution as well.
Please do.
A resolution of the local building authority of Wasatch County School District, Utah, authorizing the issuance and sale, if not more than one hundred and fifty million dollars aggregate principal amount of lease revenue bond Series two thousand and twenty-two, delegating to certain officers of the authority the ability to approve the final terms and provisions of the Series two thousand and twenty-two bonds within the parameters set forth in this resolution, set forth herein, fixing the maximum aggregate principal amount of the Series two thousand and twenty-two bonds, the maximum number of years over which the Series two thousand and twenty-two bonds may mature, the maximum interest rate which the Series two thousand and twenty-two bonds may bear, and the maximum discount from par at which the Series two thousand and twenty-two bonds may be sold. Calling a public hearing, providing for the publication of a notice of public hearing and, and bonds to be issued, providing for the running of a contest period, authorizing and approving a general indenture of trust, a supplemental indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, a master lease agreement, security documents, a ground lease, and other documents necessary for the issuance of the Series two thousand and twenty-two bonds, authorizing and approving the use and distribution of a preliminary official statement and an official statement, expressing an intent to reimburse, uh, uh, to reimburse, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and any other related matters. So moved.
Sir, second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Got it.
Yeah, are we, okay, sustain?
Do we discuss and, no, or just...
Mariana, are you in the cast of vote?
She did.
Oh, you did, okay, I didn't hear.
Oh, yeah, any questions or thoughts or comments?
Well, I mean, I maybe explain...
I mean, the motion does pass.
Yeah, just explain to anybody listening what this means.
Yeah, I was going to have Doug do that.
Okay.
I mean, not to be confused with Dell and not to be confused with...
Well, and I just want to point out what we heard in our study session. And then I asked specifically afterwards because I want it clarified, that per state statute, our public hearing for this is in thirty days. That's per state statute. We, we don't have it now, we have to do it in thirty days, correct?
The first thing to do would be to, to publish the resolution or publish a notice of the resolution. That will occur at the earliest possible time so you can get it into the newspaper of general, general circulation within the county. I've heard that, although I can't confirm, but I've heard that the publication for that is scheduled for next Wednesday. And then subsequent to the publication of that resolution, there is a thirty-day contestability period.
Thank you for stating that, it's on the record.
I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn as the local building authority. My motion that we adjourn as the local building authority. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Sure thing.
And if you don't mind sticking around, Brad, I imagine there might be some questions or...
Hope you can do so.
Yeah, no, so now we got to re-adjourn.
Reconvene.
Reconvene.
All right, welcome everybody to the Wasatch County School Board. I will follow up on just what we discussed by talking about the urgency and the need to gather and discuss these, this information. And I'm looking forward to additional comments as we go into the action items. But first, I entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I move that we approve the consent items as outlined tonight.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. All right, so now jumping into the action items, I think we're going to do a combination of both Matt and Brad. Brad, if you don't mind giving Matt just a moment to address the benefits of what we're doing, kind of a high-level summary of last, last meeting, so the study session, there we go.
Certainly, thank you, President. Matt Nugger with Stifel Nicolaus, financial advisor to the district. Appreciate this opportunity to share some thoughts on lease revenue bonding and general obligation bonding. In the study session, we discussed that there are differences between lease revenue bonds and general obligation bonds. Probably a key takeaway from, from that discussion was certainly lease revenue bonds on, on a given day are more expensive than general obligation bonds. However, I feel the district's being proactive in considering lease revenue bonds due to the fact that we are experiencing unprecedented increases in interest rates and unprecedented inflation. And nobody can predict where rates will be in six months, but, but certainly this, there is those, there are those pressures that in other economies that we've experienced over the last decade have, have not been, been there. So I feel that the district is being proactive and going through the mental gymnastics of looking at all options that are available to the district. So with that, the lease revenue bonding is a very common vehicle that's been utilized by many other school districts in the state. And over the last few years, lease revenue bonding has become more common due to the fact that we've experienced construction inflation and other challenges in the state and as school districts, some of your capital projects are the largest in the state because schools are so expensive. And so, but you're not alone. Sewer districts and cities and others have felt the pains of the inflation. But lease revenue bonding, I would say, has become a vehicle for districts to use more common in, in cases where perhaps they've, they've passed an election and the, because elections are dollar-specific and not project-specific, lease revenue bonding's been utilized to pick up some of the projects that weren't able to be financed with the general obligation bonds. There's been other circumstances where lease revenue bonds were the only vehicle that were utilized for some projects. So the district's not alone in considering this and again, the vehicles allowed to school districts is, is fewer than those for counties and cities. So these are the options and the interest rate environment is kind of to be determined, but again, there are so many signals that are showing us that rates are going up. And so an advantage of a lease revenue bond is that the district can get that locked in sooner than a general obligation bond that has to be elected or approved by voters and subsequently canvassed and then the bonding process after that. Generally, the end of the year is not a great time. Generally, the end of the year is not a great time to issue bonds because bond supply is high and interest rates increase by virtue of that and other factors. But, um, so timing on a general obligation bond would most likely be in January, February. And so, there's this several-month horizon where the district could take action to, sooner than later, in view of those inflationary challenges.
So, as a school district, we spent months. Understanding what, what they want and what they are telling us to do. And the number one recommendation is secure funds for new high school. Yes, I agree. You know, this is happening. Will this be what is accomplished?
It would, yes. You would access funds much quicker through lease revenue bond.
Any other questions for Brad?
I just want to clarify, everything, doing this now and having access to the bond market sooner rather than later, we are estimating that we're gonna save money.
I, certainly, nobody can predict the future.
Nobody can predict, but the estimation.
That's a standard, right, bond, bond guy caveat, nobody can predict the future. But when, when so many signals are, you know, yesterday's CPI figure, interest rate futures, so many things are pointing to rates going up. Certainly, it's, it's pointing towards accessing funds sooner than later is, is a definitely positive option.
Thank you.
And even though the future schools project, you know, the conclusion was to secure funds sooner and we are doing that sooner than later, it is still a fiscally responsible action because of the interest rates, because of the unknowns of the interest rates. And securing it now is actually fiscally responsible versus not knowing what's really going to happen six months down the road.
Right, yeah, the, the longer that a, a project gets put on hold or you're just subject to interest rate risk and cost risk, right? And that, those two factors can be very meaningful, or meaningful in, in a, in a size perspective.
Well, and, and referring to Twilla School District, let's just, I, I work with one of the Twilla School Board members on USBA and she made the comment because they went out to bond and because of construction costs going up. Like, when we, when we say this is an interest rate savings, we're also talking about all inflationary figures. Construction costs, material costs, all of it is what we're trying to base this decision on, is to save money across the board. Because Twilla, the Twilla situation, sorry, if you could kinda, if you know, do you know details about that? How they bonded for it in a GO, but now they're having to, they're like 48 million short or something?
That's a, that's a very common scenario here in the state.
Because of cost.
Again, you're, you pass an election, you're locked into that dollar figure and not projects. If, if the legislature would let us say, let's pass an election based on the project, then it wouldn't be as challenging. But you're having a school districts to predict where costs will be, however long your construction timeframe is, right? If it's a, a high school, you're predicting three years into the future and, and no, nobody can do that, even your architects. So, so a lot of, Twilla's not the only one, other districts have faced this where they've had a list of projects and, and they were approved, the dollar amount was approved. But certainly keeping voter promises is important and so those subsequent schools that were at the end of the list or the end of the construction schedule had to be financed by some other means and those other means are lease revenue bonds.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, from the taxpayers' savings component that Kim was mentioning, and Keith, love to get your feedback on this, and we talked a little bit about it early on, just the benefit of using existing funds that have already been taxed, that are secured, that are sitting in the school district's budget. What is the, what are the benefits of that?
Well, they're, they're already built into the budget. So, so that can, that can make, you know, payments towards these, the principal and interest on these lease revenue.
So they're not gonna be double taxed?
No.
They're already secured, we have them.
Yes.
We're gonna use them to build a school.
Yes.
We're gonna use them to pay lease payments.
Right.
To build a school.
Principal and interest payments on lease revenue bond. Potentially, none, none of the actions taken here tonight, it doesn't lock you into anything.
Yeah.
It's, it's giving you the authority to move forward if that's, if that's the will of the board. So, and that, so that's, that's the great benefit of this.
Perfect.
And, you know, we've, we've taken steps to, to shorten the life of the existing high school bonds. They'll, they'll, the final payment on those bonds will be in our fiscal year '24. And, and then the, the first payments on potential lease revenue bonds and additional GO bonds, if that's the route that the board goes, those payments will begin in 2025. And so, to the taxpayers, it, it's not going to be a, a massive increase over what they're currently paying.
Thanks.
All right, Matt.
Thank you. And then we'll have Jared, if you don't mind coming up and just from our legal standpoint that helps the school district, thoughts on this process as we've begun?
Certainly. I do have a few thoughts, President. The, the timing is significant for reasons separate and aside from any inflationary concerns. And so, generally speaking, the reason why this action is prudent presently is that you're dealing within a very certain window of time, that if you miss that window and if, for example, you were to say, go to a general obligation bond through the general election, if that were to, were to fail, now you're talking being somewhere into the next year. And so, given the, the requirements for a revenue bond and the way that also potentially syncs with the general election, it's very prudent to go forward at this point with hopes of being able to secur, secure the funds, as Matt mentioned, as soon as possible.
One of the reasons why there's urgency behind this meeting and the decisions that we're making today.
Not only the urgency, but the timing. I mean, you're, you're dealing within a very specific window where you have to hit dates specifically and that's all statute.
Okay. Any questions for Matt and Jared before we ask Brad to come back up? All right, thanks. Thanks for your patience, Brad. We'll work through action item number one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We have before you a resolution of the Board of Education. One of the requirements of state law is, is when we do a lease revenue bond transaction is that the Board of Education needs to approve of the issuance of the bonds by the building authority itself. So with that in mind, I will read to you the, the summary of the resolution, which is a resolution of the Board of Education of Wasatch County School District, Utah, authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a master lease agreement by and between the board and the local building authority of Wasatch County School District, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, a ground lease agreement, and an official statement, authorizing the issuance of sale by the authority, if not more than $150 million aggregate principal amount of lease revenue bond Series 2022, authorizing a general indenture, a supplemental indenture, a preliminary official statement, an official statement, a certificate of award, a bond purchase agreement, security documents, and other documents necessary for the issuance of the bonds, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary for the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and related matters.
So moved? So moved. Hey, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Brad. Appreciate your time. Okay, action item number two. We'll call Kirst up to discuss the calendar.
Kirst, I don't remember if we made a final decision, but let's bring both, both of those drafts. Yeah, that'd be great.
1A and 1B are they tabled?
Passing that.
Yeah.
Okay. Keith, are we okay, are we all right, guys? We do what we need to do, we're all set?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're probably gonna bug out.
That's fine, you're excused.
Thanks, fellas. So much.
Go ahead, we can take it from here, you guys are fine. Okay, Kirst, proceed, please.
Okay, great. So, thank you for the time. These are the very first drafts of the 23-24 calendar. So, in the spirit of the calendar layout that we've had in the past few years, we've got quarters ending before breaks, for the most part. We are starting, on both of them, one is 1A. If you see at the top, one says 1A and one says 1B under version at the very top in the bold letters. They're very similar with just very, there's a slight difference over the holiday break, so I'll get to that real quick. But it models as we're starting in this August, we have teachers come back the second week, late in the second week of August. The first day of school starting on August 15th, which is absolutely in line with all of the other districts with Park City to our north, east, or northwest, Alpine, all of the schools, we are pretty much in line with most of the districts that are larger that we work cooperatively with. Sometimes Salt Lake City starts quite a bit later. But for the most part, we're all starting that same week. We have opted in the past few iterations to start on Tuesday, per parent comments, because they feel like a Monday makes for a very long week for their younger children to get right back into school. Then we drop down to September, typical September, October, we have the, the quarter ending on October 13th on both and then the full fall break. And then going into professional development days, two days in a row, which has been overwhelmingly positively received by teachers, by having the opportunity to learn a concept in one day, right, Eric? And then apply it the next. So when you look at these type of professional development days, one is considered a actual day of instruction and one is not. So then we go into November, we have a typical November Thanksgiving break on November 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. And then this is where they differ in the two versions. So, and this is what gets funky when, when New Year's Day's on the first and also trying to make enough, trying to equitably distribute the number of instructional days in each quarter as much as possible. So in the iteration that is 1A, we have Christmas starting, or holiday break starting on the 25th and kids going out on the 22nd. What that allows for is two full weeks going into January 5th. Teachers come back on Monday, the 8th for two professional development days and students return on the 10th. On the other calendar, on 1B, that's the only difference is we go out as we have traditionally, which is end of quarter on December 20th. And then break is from the 21st, it's kind of broken up, to the 3rd and then we have to have teachers come back on the 4th and 5th. So it's a different sort of way to look at winter break because of the days and how they're falling. And we jumped ahead two days because we have a leap year in February of 2023. So everything shift, a lot shifted a lot more than it would normally from year to year. Then we go on and we have the end of the quarter on Mar, the end of the third quarter on March 13th and then two professional days following that, so students would not be in those two days. That again is on both calendars. Spring break is falling. And this is interesting, okay, yeah, spring break is falling, there's just two, two numbers missing on the, on the 1B draft in April, but those are the first and second. So spring break is falling on the full, second full week of April, which is the 8th. Then you have, for us to have the required 180 days of instruction and because Labor Day's quite early in 2024, we go out on Wednesday, the 29th. And if you can see the little grid in the upper right-hand side of your paper has the days of instruction per quarter.
Memorial.
I'm sorry, did I say Labor? I just dropped, jumped away ahead, I apologize, Memorial Day. Now, we have been ending the past couple of years before Memorial Day, but this is a fairly early Memorial Day, it's almost second to the earliest it could be. And to go out on May 24th seemed really, really early, honestly. So also to get the required number of days in, that would put us out on Wednesday, the 29th. Do you have questions?
So the only difference is?
Winter break.
What's happening in December?
Yep.
And January?
And when I was going through all of the other districts who have already put out their 23-24 calendars, I saw that on, it was either Canyons or Granite. And it really sort of made sense in terms of what is gonna be my recommendation of really pleasant winter break, a full two weeks. And we heard that in this year's calendar, that it felt a little chopped up. Now, of course, then it would also have to though, when people see that December 25th as the first day of winter break, that might feel weird because it's Christmas Day, though they get out on the 22nd. So that's the difference with the two versions.
So do we put these out now? So what's your recommendations, Kirst? For us to choose right now or for us to pick one and put it out for comment? What would we help with?
I wish, I would wait till the superintendent returned and see what his recommendation is for if we put two out for comment. I mean, it's ultimately your, obviously, your motion to do so. But we put it out for comment typically until the next, until the next board meeting. Pardon?
One version out for comment.
I don't know if we've put two out before.
What are you guys' comments? Yeah, use your comments.
I have a question for you, just because the, I know we have to get our 180 days of instruction and we're looking at that. Is there, the difference is basically Christmas break, but if we were to move the professional development days on 1A, that are January 8th and 9th, to January 4th and 5th, like they are on 1B, would that, those two days, would that allow us to get out before Memorial Day?
It would. So what I would ask though is if, you know, if teaching and learning could speak to how teachers will feel about coming back on the 4th and 5th of Chris, of coming back from, that would be.
And I, that's why we put it out.
It would be Thursday, Friday.
We want to get from everyone.
You know.
So what were the comments for superintendent as he returns?
What'd you talk him into, Kirst?
Well, he, he wanted your thoughts before he moved forward. I don't think anybody has a strong opinion, we just need to know, do we put one? Do we have to make a decision to put one out or can we put both of them out? How does the feedback work?
We could put them both out, that's an interesting thought.
That would be my recommendation. Because doing that different configuration for Christmas, having just the last week of December and then the first full week is something new. But then there's also to Marianne, to Board Member Allen's point, is do, what would the pushback potentially be from teachers for them to come back that Thursday and Friday in the second iteration when students are out until the next Monday? But that would give us two days and then we could still end before Memorial Day.
I think teachers are gonna be okay with that, just because it's, teachers are used to coming back, you know, after, after the second, but not really after the first. But I, I like the idea of putting, putting, putting them both out. Do the directors have any comments? Put them both out?
I think what Marianne's comment was, do we, do we take two days off Christmas, bring the teachers back earlier and then get out by Memorial Day?
Yeah, version 1B does it where the teachers come back, but if we kind of did a combo of these two and got out before Memorial Day. But I think putting both out will kind of be a good indication whether teachers want to come back on the 4th or 5th. And, and then move it around.
I would almost say we oughta, we oughta, we could look at one of these issues, or one of these calendars where we, we don't get out on Wednesday. That, that puts us coming back for just two days after Memorial Day. We stretch out Christmas break, if we went back to the more traditional calendar and, and had our full two weeks off at Christmas and we just, we just bumped that. Where are we at on our fall break? We got five days there.
Yeah, I was, so.
Five days spring, because I do understand, you know, my point has been, we don't, it's not a, it's not a a hill to die on that we, that we're out before Memorial Day, but coming back for two days does sound like maybe we don't need to do that.
I was just saying, if we maybe do a version where we move these two professional development days right there, like it is on the other. like it is on the other version, so that we can get out on the twenty-fourth of May.
Okay, I like that.
So then, still starting on the twenty-fifth.
So, you're taking basically one B, that week of one B, from this, so.
That does mean that teachers don't get two weeks off.
Yeah, and that's where maybe feedback from them, like, would they want a shorter Christmas break so that they can get out before Memorial? Because it's hard to come back even as a teacher for two days after Memorial. Like, that's hard.
And what do you do?
Mm-hmm.
Well, and also, I think, you know, if the term ends on the, on the twentieth, am I looking at this right?
In December?
No, I'm talking about December. So, if the term ends on the twentieth. We're go, go ahead.
Sorry, you keep going, sorry.
It does.
And then you're going out, you're, you're immediately going out on both schedules, right? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanna make it really clean, look at one B, and take December twenty-one and twenty-two, and, and, and you go to school until the twenty-second, and December twenty-one and twenty-two, take out the twenty-ninth and twenty-eighth of May.
So, just trade these two for those two, huh?
For those two. And that would give you a difference of getting out before Memorial.
Right.
And you're still getting two weeks.
And you're still getting two weeks for your students.
But not for teachers.
But then teachers can weigh in and tell us,
Mm-hmm.
does it matter to them, and more to them than the people in the room, that they're getting out before Memorial or after Memorial Day?
So, that would be just one version, one draft going out, with those changes?
We still have two, right?
Yeah, one B and one C or whatever.
Yeah, one C would be the getting out before Memorial.
Okay.
And they, and they don't go to Christmas break till the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, you and I meet in the morning, and I think we can encapsulate what they've said and.
My recommendation is, though, and I appreciate the review, so that we can get it out as soon as possible. Because I, it would be ideal, if possible, to have it approved as people, as kids go back to school, but if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But that, that is, that would be the recommended timeline for getting something posted. But if we can't, you know, let's see what we come back with, with the comments next month.
Thank you.
Right. So, we got a motion.
Do we need a motion on that?
We're gonna put it out for review, yeah. I make motion that we, I move that we put out for thirty-day review the Wasatch County School District Calendar, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, let's bring up Eric, go through number three.
Thank you, Board, again, another calendar item. If we can, but this one is for this upcoming year. As you guys know, we came and talked a little while about it, all of our elementary K-two teachers are involved in a letters training, which is early literacy training that the state has provided for our teachers this past year. There are a total of eight full days that the teachers are required to be in training. In addition to, in between those trainings, they have about twelve hours' worth of reading and homework that they need to accomplish in the meantime. So, this past year, we were able to get three of those sessions done. And so, the state would like us to be finished by the end of June, and we would need to do five more. This past year, we asked for three days, additional days that the state law allows us. They allow us thirty-two hours for professional development, to come off the one-hundred-and-eighty days. But to be able to finish this and give the teachers enough time in between each session, we are asking for April seventeenth as an additional professional development day. Again, this past year, we did three, we were asking for the four, which is a lot of us in state law, just to be able to finish this letters training this upcoming year. So, my recommendation is that the Board amend the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar to add a professional development day on April seventeenth.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
You're asking for a second.
Tom, I was thinking you said a second.
All in favor?
So.
I thought you said second.
I have a question for you, Eric, really quick.
Second.
Um, so, we're ta, we're adding the seventeenth, are we having, is this one, so this is one of our exemption days? So, we don't have to add to the end of the calendar?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanna clarify.
Our last one.
Okay.
That's available to us.
Cool.
Perfect, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, moving on. Next, let's bring up the esteemed Director, Sean Kelly.
I have quite a few agenda items. Most of these are following up from last month. So, the first one is our negotiation salary guidelines. This was out for review, I have received no comments on this policy, so I am recommending that we adopt this policy as written.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item passes.
Okay, my next item is the group insurance policy revisions. Same thing, last board meeting, we talked about this. Out for review, I have received no comments concerning this policy. My recommendation is to adopt it as written.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item passes.
And next, we have the substitute teacher policy revision. Again, last month, we talked about this, went out for review. I've received no comments concerning this policy, so my recommendation is to adopt this policy as written.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes.
Number seven is the employee bereavement policy. Again, last board meeting, we discussed this, new state statute. Indic, we, we needed to change our policy, it was out for review, I've received no comments concerning this policy. My recommendation is we adopt the policy as written.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item passes.
Number eight, the health inclusion exclusion, Aubrey presented that. It's been out for thirty-day review, we have received no comments concerning this policy. Again, my recommendation would be to adopt this policy as written.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item passes.
And number nine was the medication administration policy. Again, Aubrey came and presented this information to you for new policy. Out for review, we have received no comments concerning it, so our recommendation would be to adopt this policy as written for policy.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item passes.
Okay. Those are all the reviews. Now, remember, my next one is the purchase. If you remember, we have approved the capital list, we had a list of about one-point-one, one-point-two million-dollar projects. Tonight, I am here to secure the vehicles that were on that list. They are very difficult to find hard numbers, but we've actually accomplished that goal now. You see, we have a few bids before you. Ken Garf had a twenty-twenty-two F-three-fifty for forty-two thousand, three forty-six. We actually need two of these vehicles per budget. Labrum Chevrolet has the ability to order now twenty-twenty-threes. So, we have a Chevy Silverado thirty-five-hundred and a Chevy Silverado twenty-five-hundred, one for forty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty, one for forty-two thousand, six hundred for the F, or for the twenty-five-hundred. So, speaking with our maintenance people, they're preferring Chevys right now, they would like Chevys. These are a year newer, so my recommendation is to buy the two Labrum vehicles, one for forty-three thousand, one sixty for the thirty-five-hundred, and the other one, the Silverado twenty-five-hundred for forty-two thousand, six hundred, would be my recommendation for the Board.
So, I have a question, how many are these, are these crew cab trucks?
So, one of them has an extended cab, we don't buy the double, it's called an extended cab, so they can put stuff in it.
And then like the Ford S-three-fifty and then the thirty-five-hundred, those are full-ton, like, do we need the ton trucks, or ha, or three-quarter ton?
So, we put a bed, a maintenance utility bed, one of these comes without that, so we like the thirty-five-hundred of the ton truck to carry that bed.
Okay.
And put tools in it, it becomes heavy, it's also good to plow snow, or when we need to pull a trailer, we hook the thirty-five-hundreds on it. We have one diesel ton truck as well, so.
So, it's not just like people, I, I just want it to be known, people aren't just driving these around, these are, are work trucks, they're being used for work.
Oh, e- every day, yeah.
Yes.
These are not leisure vehicles, they're work trucks.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Sean.
It's not the lariat package.
They're not, they're the stripped-down model.
They're not the LTZ Silverado.
No.
I'm motion that we approve the purchase of maintenance vehicles from Labrum Chevrolet for forty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty dollars, for a twenty-twenty-three Silverado three-fifty, and a twenty-twenty-three Silverado twenty-five-hundred for forty-two thousand, six hundred.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Thanks, Sean, for all your help tonight. All right, I'll entertain a motion to table item number eleven, and then adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel, and then come back and approve item eleven in this board meeting.
I move that we adjourn to, that we table item eleven and adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you in a bit.
Alright, welcome back. We just returned from executive session where we've discussed personnel. And we have one more action item in this board meeting. And we'll move to number 11. So I entertain a motion that we approve the contract renewal for superintendent and business administrator.
Keith, do we need any details on that as far as the number of years?
It is a two-year renewal. That's the appointment of the superintendent and business administrator.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent and business administrator contract.
Perfect.
For two years.
For two years. Renewal for two years.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11 passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, we're ready to adjourn. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.